Ah, you can now proceed to recognize or wish to interpolate.
Yes, the first to ask his questions, Mister Speaker is MP Don Loong.
Thank you, uh, Majority Floor Leader.
MP Don Loong is recognized. You have the pleasure, sir.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I will be swift and direct to the point. First point, Mister Speaker, is regarding Section Eight, Article Four, regarding the effect of nomination of, uh, of candidates for members of parliament. It seems to clash with Article Seven, Section One.
What is your premise at Article Eight, Section Four? Article Four, Section Eight?
Yes, um.
Article?
Article Four, Section Eight, the effect of nomination clashes with, uh, Section One of Article Seven. It's in page twenty-one. One.
Section One, Article Seven?
One section states that when you are nominated by a political party, you are not deemed resigned whether you are appointed or elected. On the other hand, under page twenty-one, um, which is.
Just, just cite the section and the article, not the page.
Section One, Article Seven, it states that the, uh, person who accepts nomination is deemed resigned. So can we, uh, get clarification on this? Section One, can we go to Article Seven, Election Administration? Section One, it reads, "Subject to exceptions provided in this code, any person holding a public appointive office or position, including active members of the AFP, shall be considered ipso facto resigned from office."
That is the answer.
So, are we saying that the, we are referring to the exception to the rule? And therefore, what we are saying is that whether you're holding an appointive or elective position, is you are not deemed resigned. The implication of which is that all director generals of the Bangsa Moro government can be nominated and they are not deemed resigned. This will have implications, Mister Speaker, wherein powers and influence and resources of government can be used by political parties by nominating career executives holding influential and powerful and resource-laden government posts.
If I may respond, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker?
Please proceed.
The import of Section One under Article Seven is that it is the general, the general rule is that any person holding a public appointive office or position is deemed ipso facto resigned from his or her, uh, office upon filing of the Certificate of Candidacy. The exception is Section Eight of Article Four as well as Section Three of Article Ten. So there are two exceptions provided in this code. Why, uh, why is it that the, um, nomination of uh, an individual who holds appointive office as a party nominee does not make him ipso facto resigned? It is, it finds basis in Comelec Resolution Number Nine Three Six Six, which is also practiced in the party list system in the national government. That those who are, uh, nominated under the party list, who actually are, uh, public appointees or, uh, public officials are not deemed resigned. And the lame duck, um, provision or principle, meaning the one-year prohibition from appointment does not always, does not also apply to him or her. So this finds legal basis in a Comelec resolution, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, do, when we say appointive, do we refer to regular rank-and-file employees?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
So, meaning rank-and-file employees, career executives who are nominated to a political party as members of parliament are not deemed resigned?
That is correct, Mister Speaker, because it is the party that is running and not the individual, Mister Speaker.
So Mister Speaker, uh, does that mean that there is no, um, that there is actually, um, that everything falls within the exception to the rule?
That is not accurate, Mister Speaker. Those who are running as district representatives and sectoral representatives are deemed resigned, Mister Speaker, because it, it is them as individuals running and not a party.
Last on this point, Mister Speaker, is that on a political note, uh, I just hope that there is no implication with, uh, senior, for example, director generals of the ministries of the Bangsa Moro being nominated for political parties, doesn't that mean that they will be influenced? And they will become very political in nature, being nominees one year prior to the election?
Mister Speaker, that is, uh, something that we cannot speculate on, but, uh, the rule that we apply is something that is also applied in the national party list system. So there should no, there should not be any distinction, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. To be fast, I'll move to the next, regarding vacancies. I'm concerned that the vacancies for traditional leaders have not been, uh, uh, clearly stated unlike the one in the IPs. Would it be possible that there will be clear provisions for the succession in the traditional leader aspects of the sectoral representatives?
Mister Speaker, there is a common provision in regard to the vacancy in, uh, sectoral repres- representation, representative seats, especially to those three, uh, named which the election or the selection of which is provided for in this, uh, bill. So, let me just. If you could kindly refer to Section Thirty-seven of Article Four, Mister Speaker. Failure of election of NMIPs, traditional leaders and ulama sectoral representatives. In case of failure of the NMIPs, traditional leaders and ulama to elect their respective representatives in the parliament within the period provided by the BO, the seats reserved for this particular sector shall remain vacant until such time that the representative is selected, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, um, my question was more directed to succession in terms of if we are defining sultanates being represented in the traditional leaders, will the rotation immediately apply when there is disability or death of a traditional leader representative? Or will a traditional leader from the same sultanate take over and complete the term?
Floor Leader may answer.
There is no equivalent provision on this, uh, as it is written, Mister Speaker, and we can improve the language. But, um, my sense during the committee meeting, my sense during the committee meeting is that, uh, it will have to be, uh, the, the the sector will have to go through the same process, uh, of electing or selecting the, the traditional leaders representative.
Are you looking for MP Marjani?
Yes.
He is around. Maybe MP Marjani can, uh, can help the floor leader.
Yes, MP Marjani. But I think the sense during the committee meeting, um, when, uh, the, this particular portion of the bill was, uh, being discussed is that and not only to the traditional leaders, Mister Speaker, that they have to go through the same process in order to come, uh, to, uh, to elect another, um, representative, Mister Speaker. Including filling the vacancies, Mister Speaker.
Mi- Mister Speaker, on the same topic about traditional leaders, we know that the Bangsa Moro Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage will be the one tasked to certify that a nominee is a traditional leader. And that they have a track record in, in terms of advocacy. Mister Speaker, um, does this, are, are we aware of the responsibility that we will be giving to the, uh, Bangsa Moro, um, Cultural Heritage Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage? Two things, number one, they will certify that a person is a mem- is a traditional leader in the registration. And number two, as a candidate, considering the unwritten tradition of our sultanates, are we aware of the intense responsibility we are given, giving to the commission?
Mister Speaker, it is, uh, written in the BOL under Section Twenty-five of Article Nine, Mister Speaker, that the Bangsa Moro Commission for the Preservation of Cultural Heritage shall have the primary responsibility to write the history of the Bangsa Moro people and shall coordinate closely with, um, the sultanates, no? Hey there. The sultanates such as those of Sulu, Magindanaw, Kabuntalan, Buayan. So that's in the BOL, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, under the same Article Four, it states that traditional leaders are those referring to the royal sultanates in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao. This shall include the sultanates of Sulu, Magindanaw, Kabuntalan, Buayan, royal houses of Ranaw and the Iranuns. For purposes of, uh, the rotation, are these individually considered? Or is the royal houses of Magindanaw, Kabuntalan and Buayan and Iranun considered as one, uh, group? And then the royal house of Ranaw and the royal house of Sulu, thereby making it three? Or are we talking about one, two, three, four, five, six sultanates?
We are talking about four major sultanates, Mister Speaker, based on the provision of the BOL. The mag- sultanates of Magindanaw, Kabuntalan and Buayan all belong to the Sultanate, Sultanate of Magindanaw, Mister Speaker.
Based on the same provision, Mister Speaker, so this will own, the ro- the traditional leader definition will only be confined to the royal families? So therefore, blood is the determining factor to be considered as a Sultan? Is that correct?
Yes, in the, yes, Mister Speaker.
Along this line, do you think, Mister Speaker, that the Bangsa Moro Commission for Preservation of Cultural Heritage will have the competency to do the tracing of genealogy of royal families of the aforementioned sultanates?
Mister Speaker, uh, give us a government, uh, institution mandated under Section Twenty-four of the BOL to be created for that purpose, Mister Speaker. I will not question the competence of the BCPCH to do this, Mister Speaker.
I agree, uh, with the speaker, Mister Speaker, because the, uh, unlike other sectors, there is no one in charge. And, uh, perhaps a law creating an office for the traditional leaders, just like the law creating the office for settler communities can be made. But in the meantime, we hope that the commission will have that, uh, uh, competency to address these matters, uh, especially considering, Mister Speaker, this might open up conflicts. Because even at present, there are a lot of conflicts going on in Sulu, Magindanaw and Lanaw, with, uh, sultanates declaring, uh, themselves as Sultan and others competing. We hope that the, uh, uh, the commission will be able to address this. On the transitory provision, Mister Speaker, moving out to the traditional leaders, I'm sure the other members of parliament will be able to, to ask the same questions. It states that the ten thousand membership of political parties must have existence in more than half of all the municipalities of all the provinces and cities in the Bangsa Moro. And, uh, if the elections were to be held in twenty-twenty-five, that means that we should have political parties by April of next year having that kind of ten thousand constituency. Will that be feasible, Mister Speaker?
In practical terms, Mister Speaker, if that is going to be how, it is, if that is how the electoral code is going to be, um, things may have to be, may have to happen, Mister Speaker, by then.
Miss, Mister Speaker, on the budget of the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office, it states here a reservation that the reserve, that the reserve fund shall not exceed the allocated maintenance and operating expense of the BO for that election year. Mister Speaker, are we aware of how much the, um, operating expense of the B, of the regional office was for last year?
We have no information, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, don't you think it's a dangerous provision that we will limit an amount to something that we do not still have a factual, uh, reference, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, the wisdom in putting a, uh, a cap in that provision, Mister Speaker, is to ensure that we do not give more than what the Commission on Elections as a national government agency is willing to give to the Comelec, uh, to the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office for that particularly year, Mister Speaker. Uh, and if you look at the pro- provision, Mister Speaker, it is permissive. It uses the words maybe, Mister Speaker.
Or may not.
Mister Spe- Speaker, the word shall was used here and therefore it is mandatory. Mister Speaker, I say this because I have been doing a lot of consultations with Lente and I had been doing, uh, focus group discussions with some Comelec, uh, officials. And I have learned that local government units, cities, provinces, um, have been funding in millions. In cities here in Mindanao, um, they are funding, uh, up to three million, four million. Provinces fund four million, because what do you fund? You fund for the registration, the continuing registration, the orientation. So, um, clearly, the fact that it is being done already nationwide states that the influence that we are worried about, um, does not happen because what is supporting is the office and not necessarily the candidate. That's number one. Number two, in fact, job order contracts nationwide are being provided twenty job order contracts per city, ten job order contracts per province. And clearly, this had not influenced the Comelec at all for the past years. Therefore, I'm just worried, Mister Speaker, that we may still be able to empower and strengthen the Comelec. Because as you know, there are a thousand five hundred municipalities and Comelec has a very limited fund. I will just, uh, propose amendments perhaps in, in due time, Mister Speaker. And I'd just like also to express.
On that subject matter.
On that subject matter. And then I'd just like to express reservation on the ten thousand membership requirement, considering the timeframe again, that by, we still have roughly thirteen months to go.
Do you want to discuss that already? Because you may not have the chance. This is the interpolation.
It's okay, Mister Speaker.
In the period of amendments, there will be no discussion anymore. You just propose and formulate your own amendments.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Just for my opinion, Mister Speaker, implementing or imposing the ten thousand, uh, constituency for political party for implementation by April next year and, uh, the BO, uh, this coming into law in a few months might be very limiting i- in, uh, practical terms. Mister Speaker, so I hope that the other members can raise that so that, uh, I will not get more, uh, time.
Others have reservations on that, so proceed to others, other topic.
Mister Speaker, under Section Nine, in terms of nomination of candidates, we have a provision for, uh, anti-political dynasty in the electoral code. And it states that nominees should not be related within second degree of consanguinity and affinity. In practical terms, ang magkapatid, ang mag brother-in-law, ang mag, uh, father-in-law, ang tatay hindi pwede.
Sa isang regional political.
Sa isang regional political party. Now, it also states that violation of this provision will disqualify one of the nominees. Or it could be many. So, baka pwedeng lagyan ng one or more of the nominees. And number two, it states determined by the party. How will the parties determine? Baka naman pwedeng ilagay na diretso, toss coin, drawing of lots. Because we cannot review all the, the consti and bylaws of all these political parties. Moreover, maybe this provision can be placed under the committee that is assigned to determine conflicts in terms of, uh, membership.
Is the question. The, the parang anti-dynasty provision?
Yes. Do we have a clear provision, Mister Speaker? Uh, to state who will be disqualified? Because I'm sure the father-in-law, the father, the brother, the sister are all interested. So, can we make it a parliament decision to decide on who gets to be included and who gets to be excluded?
Mister Speaker, that would be, um, I think, uh, we would like to promote party autonomy in that sense, Mister Speaker, that will allow parties to determine who or how they do it, how they disqualify one or more of the nominees, Mister Speaker. Because if we spell it out in the rules, Mister Speaker, um, that will not give, uh, the parties liberty to decide or to design their own processes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, uh, on that note, perhaps we could also include in the electoral code, because it is not stated there that those who are nominated makes a notarized, um, statement that he is nom- not nominated in any other, uh, political party.
Can that be proposed as an amendment later on in the period of amendment? Or, yeah?
Mister Speaker, I will have to check the contents of the Certificate of Candidacy, Mister Speaker, and Certificate of Acceptance, because if I recall it correctly, there is a portion there that, uh, the, the person, the individual has to take, uh, certifying that he or stating that he or she is not nominated in any other party. I think it's in the, um, Certificate of Acceptance, Mister Speaker. I will have to check, Mister Speaker.
Referring to one nomination only. But, uh, relatives who will run as nominees in two different political regional parties allowed.
That is correct, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, as regards the, um, manner of election of sectoral representatives, we s- we are requiring the voters to determine that they can be part of one sector to three sectors. Mister Speaker, in my dialogue with, uh, Lente and members of the officials of Comelec, they find this mechanism quite complicated to implement. May I ask, Mister Speaker, was this issue raised to the Comelec? And did they concur as to its implementability? Wherein, this would require, Mister Speaker, an entire re-registration of the Bangsa Moro populace, the, the two million, uh, registered voters, so they can choose. They are a woman, they are a traditional leader, they are, um, part of the youth, and how the, the ballot would look like. I would like to inquire if this has already the concurrence or a positive, uh, opinion from the Comelec?
Yes, the short answer is yes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, rounding up to the, the last, uh, few points, Mister Speaker, as regards the intra and inter sultanate assembly, is the principle here, Mister Speaker, in terms of the number of members of, uh, for example, when we talk about intra sultanate assembly, can we hear on the concept of that? Are we going to pull in all the, for example, in, uh, Lanaw? Are we going to pull in all the sultans of Lanaw? Can we hear it from the speaker?
Yes, uh, Mister Speaker, if I may, the intra sultanate assembly that is envisioned to happen after the, um, the convention, the Royal Sultanate Convention will, uh, be within a certain geographic, uh, geographical territory of sultanates. For example, for the Sultanate of Lanaw, they will hold or convene an assembly where all of the recognized sultans, um, will attend. So the intra, uh, sultanate assembly will only involve those who belong to the royal houses in a particular territory, Mister Speaker.
The, the, the inter is amongst different sultanates in a convention, no? And then the intra is among the same sultanate.
Yes. Thank you, Mister Speaker. So when we say the inter conference, is that just the four of them individually, the elected ones? Or is that like the convergence of one thousand royal families from Lanaw? You know, uh, there's a few only in Sulu, maybe two hundred? Is, will it be that way? Or will it be the representatives only of the sultanates that will do the inter, uh, sultanate conference?
So the inter sultanate convention is envisioned to involve all of those who are recognized from all of the sultanates that, uh, are mentioned in the code, Mister Speaker.
We, ma- floor leader, interjection, yung sultanate being used, are we referring really to the Sultan? Because the sultanate is the institution.
Yes.
So we refer only to the Sultan?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
So, so we, we are looking at a situation where there will be maybe five hundred members of the Lanaw Sultanate, maybe three hundred in, uh, Magindanaw and then maybe fifty in Sulu, because, so my question, Mister Speaker, is, is that will there be a voter in terms of the one that gets the most number of votes will be the member of parliament?
Uh, no, Mister Speaker. The idea is that during the convention, the sultanates will agree on who among them will be representing the, uh, traditional leader sectoral representation in parliament. Meaning, if they decide that this year for the certain term, it's going to be the Sultanate of Sulu, then the ones that will assemble during the intra sultanate assembly will only be those who belong to the Sultanate of Sulu. And they choose from among the sultanates of Sulu. In- that includes Basilan and Tawi-Tawi, who will represent. So that's the idea, Mister Speaker.
So each sultanate will, um, choose one?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
And then that will do the rotation, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Along this line, Mister Speaker, under, uh, the way that we construct laws, it is important that we can analyze the, the, the variables. it is important that we canalize the variables in a law. The concept of traditional leader, Mr. Speaker, is there a clear definition from any encyclopedia on earth?
There is none that I know, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, that's one. So meaning, it is by tradition. It is... There is no encyclopedia. I checked it. Not even Google Scholar, not even the other research mechanisms.
Only in the Bangsamoro.
Only the Bangsamoro, which we are defining. And number two, Mr. Speaker, we have a hybrid justice system. We live in a... Amidst legal plurality, where we have the Western laws, we have the Sharia law, and we have the traditional laws. Now, on matters of traditional law, the best persons to adjust, adjudicate, and determine the variables and the framework for that are the traditional leaders, are the elders. Unfortunately, in the present instance, we have given the mandate to the Bangsamoro Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage who were appointed based on determining, you know, other cultural aspects of the Bangsamoro. Mr. Speaker, don't you think that challenge of them... Because I think it is the commission that will facilitate this intra- and interconference, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the history of including traditional leaders in the sectoral representatives traces back to the negotiations and the Bangsamoro... And the drafting of the Bangsamoro Basic Law and later on, the Bangsamoro Organic Law. The contemplated situation is that we do not want to exclude the sultanates in the sense of giving them representation in the parliament. But it cannot be legalized that it can only be the sultanates. That's why looking for a better and best term to use in the law, it is traditional leaders. So what is contemplated by law in allowing or giving a seat for sectoral representation to traditional leaders is that they are the sultanates.
Mr. Speaker, I support that concept. I support our sultanates and their role they had for our history. I support this concept. I am just worried for the Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage. Imagine, the sultanates will have an intraconference here in this session hall. It is the Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage that will act as sergeant-at-arms at the door. They will be the one to say, "I'm sorry, you're not a member of the Sultanate. You have to step out." Of course, they will be the subject of intense anger by the sultanates. So I hope we can put up a protective mechanism for that, considering this very complex nature.
Mr. Speaker, let us not lose sight of the provision of the code that allows or actually tasks the Bangsamoro Electoral Office and of the Komelec to monitor. So it is there, not just the BCPCH, just in case. The BEO will also be there to ensure that all the proceedings are in order and that they... That everybody is followed and, you know, the monitoring task is with the BEO, Mr. Speaker. And at the moment, it is the BCPCH that exists as an institution to make sure that this can be operationalized, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the last questions, Mr. Speaker, last few, regarding the election of sectoral representatives. So for 2025, it is just organizations that will be electing among themselves the sectoral representatives for the members of parliament. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, based on section 1 of the transitory provisions, it should be on the basis of election during assemblies called for the purpose by the sectoral organizations, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. But then, by 2028, except for non-moro IPs, ulama, and traditional leaders, the women, the youth will have to run?
Yes, including the settler representatives, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we get the wisdom of the committee on rules why we had to necessitate that the non-moro IPs is exempted, the ulama and the traditional leaders are exempted, but then, the settler, the youth, and the women must run in a regional election come 2028?
Mr. Speaker, in following the idea of canalizing the provisions of the law and the intents of the provisions thereof, the three sectoral representatives, the non-moro IPs, ulama, and the traditional leaders have complications in terms of making sure who gets to vote and who gets to be voted. Whereas, the women, the settlers, and the youth have characteristics that are easily discernible by virtue of physical attributes or orientation. So we would like for everyone belonging to the women, youth, and settler sectors to be able to exercise their right to vote, to vote for someone who can represent the sector as it is. Whereas, in the NMIP, well, the law, the Bangsamoro Organic Law, is very clear on that, saying that it is the customary practices and traditions of the IPs, NMIPs, that will have to be followed. And the ulama, taking into consideration the religious factor of the ulama, that we do not want them to lose that sense of religiosity in taking part in politics, etc. And then, the traditional leaders, as I mentioned earlier, that there is going to be a challenge in looking for a legitimate list of who is a Sultan or who is not. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The ulama was mentioned, and I read in the proposed code that the member of parliament coming from the ulama sector will be a political and will have no voting rights. Mr. Speaker, can we be clarified? How can this be possible when that member of parliament from the ulama sector will be a member of the committee? Will have to decide because it is not a matter of a political, Mr. Speaker, but a matter of deciding for policy. As members of parliament, our job is to create public policy.
Mr. Speaker, the good gentleman from Sulu may have the old version of the Committee on Rules. I am surprised because he's not a member of the Committee on Rules, but he has that old version, perhaps referring to the old version, which is not the adopted version in the committee report. So in the committee report, Mr. Speaker, that is no longer included, and we adopted the similar approach as the NMIPs and the traditional leaders, Mr. Speaker.
So last point, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to commend the Committee on Rules and the speaker for defending it well and for being able to do the gargantuan task, almost impossible job of doing the draft electoral code.
Maraming salamat sa aking kababayan from Sulu for going straight to the point and not going around, beating around the bush. So you have saved us much time. Thank you very much.